Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, September 21st, 2022 Regular Planning Commission Meeting. It is now 5:40. If we could have a roll call.
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Here.
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris?
Here.
Commissioner Tulkin?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
And Chair Reese.
Here. We are ready, I think, at this point with to move to special agenda items, and the first one we have is a planning director's report, so if we can get that report, we appreciate it.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Apologize for being late as having computer issues. On your upcoming agendas, we'll be joining in tomorrow night for recommendations to City Council on the Housing Element. And then October 12th, initiate discussions on Housing Element zoning redline. City Council actions, nothing to note recently. Some upcoming items, September 27th, next Tuesday, EV charger reach code amendments. And then on October 11th, we'll be presenting the Housing Element to the City Council for their final adoption. Also on the 11th, IZO extension for private outdoor space, a permanent ordinance for economic recovery, 2022 building code updates, and a resolution declaring surplus lands. On the Housing Element updates, I think you're all pretty much up to speed on what's going on there. Again, we'll be moving forward with the Housing Element adoption with the hopes of getting it to HCD and getting their buy-off by October 15th. So that's the goal. One other thing I'd like to mention, I might have already brought this up with the commission, but we have hired a new code manager. That person, his name is Dan Mick. He comes from West Hollywood where he's currently a code supervisor. And he brings a lot of good experience to the city. West Hollywood has a lot of similar issues that we deal with here in terms of short-term rental, vendor enforcement, all kinds of things like that. So looking forward to having Dan start. And once he has a, you know, few weeks or months to kind of get the lay of the land, I'd like to bring him to the commission and introduce them to you. So you could all meet him. So I'll be doing that soon. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Commissioners, do we have any questions of the director? I am not seeing any, so thank you very much, and we're going to move on. Move on to the next item, which is 1B. And we have a couple of announcements I want to go through. Please note tonight's procedure for public comment, we are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call once the caller queue for each item opens. The caller queue will open when each item is introduced and will close after the first five public comments are heard. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received after 12:00 PM will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but may not be posted online with the planning commission agenda or prior to the meeting. A quick announcement about the moderator chat function, the moderator chat function in blue jeans is for technical help only for administrative staff. It is not for public comment. The commission cannot chat and the comments will not be forwarded to the commission or entered into the record. Commissioners, do you have any announcements? Commissioner Raskin? And then Lambert.
Yeah, I do have an announcement, and I'm going to ask Sheila if she's to share a photo. I've been asked by the Public Landscape Division to solicit comments from the community. Well, any information that the community has regarding nine ficus trees that were recently vandalized. These trees are located at 2308, 2301, and 2223 Georgina. At some point during the recent heat wave, a private company came in and topped these city trees the public right-of-way. Our Public Landscape Manager Matthew Wells has said that this is the worst case of vandalism he's seen in nearly 10 years working here. So if any members of the public have any information as to who did this, please contact the Public Landscape Division at public.landscape@santamonica.gov. All I got for that.
Wow. Thank you for that. That's pretty dramatic haircut. Okay, moving on, Commissioner Lambert?
I just have one announcement. I'm going to miss all the meetings in October because I'm going to be on vacation, so I just wanted to let you know that. Have fun with all the development standards, you guys.
Well, thank you for that, and we'll try to save a few for you. Any other announcements, Commissioners? Okay, I'm not seeing any. We're going to go to the consent calendar. Well, I would like to announce the caller queue is open for this item. Staff will share the phone number on the screen. Anyone wishing to provide oral public comment on this item may begin to call in now, and once you are in the queue, you will you will hear the meeting over the phone when it is time for you to speak. And as your turn to speak, you will be notified and you will be unmuted by the moderator. Commissioners, are there any items you'd like to pull off of the agenda today? Commissioner Fresco?
I would like to keep the item on the agenda, but take it off the consent calendar, number 2A, please.
Okay. Permission, well, do we need a second on that?
No, it is not required.
Okay, great. Then I think, can we go on and vote on 2B and 2C? If nobody's going to pull those off and then come back to this, the 2A, staff?
Yes, you may.
Okay. You do your public comment first in case they, for whatever reason, want to talk on the minutes.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask, if we have to wait out the time.
Sorry, Chair, while we're waiting, I was absent for the meeting of August 3rd, but I was present for the meeting of September 7th. I am happy to vote on the consent agenda, but not having been present at the August 3rd meeting, I'm not sure whether I should abstain on that one.
All right, Chair, while we're waiting.
Okay, Commissioner Fondabarnardi, I think you had a question too, a comment?
I'm in a similar situation. I was absent on the August 3rd meeting.
Okay, so let's do those one at a time. We'll do those one by one, once we get to it, and then people can vote or abstain if they need to. Staff, if we maybe what we, maybe what we need to do just to make sure we get the public comment is we go and hear 2A. And let's have a staff report, and Nina can ask her questions. We can see if we got any callers. Leslie, you're still there. We still see you.
What did you just say? I'm sorry.
I'm waiting for public, making sure we get people time to call in, and so what I'm thinking is we just go ahead with 2A item, and that gives a little bit of time for people to call in.
Since we had discussed this a little bit last time, and it's a very simple item, I would move to Wade's staff report.
Second? Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert? Commissioner Lambert? You're muted.
Yes, yes.
There we go. Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes. Okay, want to get it, you want to jump into your discussion, Nina?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick deletion of one line in the ROI on page nine. On the very last, whereas that leads up to the now therefore, it begins, "The revised demolition permit review process related to the preservation of historic resources ensures," that's the part I want to delete, because basically, the we, I'll just say for now, we want to keep open what ensures the city's ability to properly identify and evaluate historic resources before they are lost to demolition. So I just want to say the city's ability, I want this to say, beginning right after that phrase, "The city's ability to properly identify, evaluate, and preserve historic resources before they are lost to demolition ensures that buildings or structures over 40 years of age are properly reviewed in accordance with the city's established goals of safeguarding the city's historic aesthetic and cultural heritage." So I believe, so we'll just leave it at that for now. So I move this ROI with that deletion.
I have a question. I have a question.
Hold on, hold on, let's get a, let's get a second. I will second it for discussion purposes, and then go ahead, Commissioner Lambert.
I have something that I, that's very important to me that I want to see in the redline. Should I wait till they come to us or say it now?
There's no need to say that right now. This is just to initiate the process, so you can save that for the substantive discussions later.
Okay.
And Commissioner Raskin? And Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, but before we vote, I do want to acknowledge the comments we've received from members of the community, including Bruce Letty, Roger Kenzer, Valia Sloan, and, you know, other folks who have been talking about this, and really acknowledge the fact that you know, I for one, and I think all of us, I hear you, and you know, what we're doing tonight is a ROI to bring back further discussion in the future as to how we're going to potentially address issues. And so we're not making any, any changes tonight, but we hear you and will be cognizant of all these issues as we move forward.
Commissioner Landris?
I'm just, I just have a clarifying question for the maker of the motion. Is it the city's ability to do this that ensures it, or is it the proper identification, evaluation, and preservation of that ensures that this is done?
That would be acceptable. It's just the assertion that we need to adopt the IZO as it is, because it's the way to preserve it that I object to. So sure, you can, that is a friendly adjustment to the language.
So you're, it would be whereas the proper identification, evaluation, and preservation of historic resources before they are lost to demolition ensures that buildings and structures, et cetera.
Right. Basically, I believe this, well, I'm responding to the letters that we received from all of those people, and there may be a much better way to approach this, and I want to make sure that the language of the ROI isn't directing us to do it a certain way before we've even done it.
Which is why I thought I would make the suggestion that I did. Okay.
Excellent.
Well, I guess I would ask if staff has any comments on the changes?
We are fine with the change.
Great.
I have another question.
Commissioner Lambert?
Nina, you're more familiar with this than I am, so maybe you can answer it. I want to stay on the redline that we have concurrent application filing allowances because of S3330. Is there anything in the ROI that prohibits that?
No.
Okay, cool.
Especially if we make sure that we're not facing our next discussion on what the IZO is, and we're just coming up with a really good definition or process for demolition review.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have public comment.
There is one person in the queue. So let me share, I have the timer up. Good evening, last four digits, 4773, you are in the meeting now. You're unmuted, and you will have three minutes for your comment. If you could please state your full name.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Ruth Ann Lehrer with the Santa Monica Conservancy. I'm one of the folks who submitted a letter, which I think you've read our communications. And I'm, I'm here basically to answer any questions that you might have for the Conservancy. We've been relegated in the position of reviewing demolition permits during this interim period when the Landmarks Commission has not been enabled to do so. We believe that this is not the correct direction, that we would like to see the Landmarks Commission retain their long-held responsibility to review demolition permits. And we believe that a way forward in this direction can be found. So that's really my comment. Your discussion has been helpful tonight, and I've heard that and acknowledge your concern and your interest with safeguarding our historic preservation program, and we certainly want to make it integrated with all the other agendas that are on the city's concerns. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them otherwise. I think you understand where the Santa Monica Conservancy is coming from and where the direction we would like to see this go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the caller? Not at this point, but we appreciate your comments and know you'll stay actively involved with this issue as it moves forward. Okay, any other caller, staff?
No, there are none.
All right. I will close the public comment, public hearing, and go to discussion and/or a vote. Any other discussion at this point? Seeing none, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese.
Yes. Thank you very much for that. Can I get a motion on the August 3rd meeting minutes?
They're moved.
I move it. That's it.
All right, I have Raskin moving and Lambert second. I'm just going to ask one more time, do we have any public commenters left that might want to comment on this?
No, we do not.
Okay. Great. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
I abstain.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Abstain.
Commissioner Tulkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Chair Reese.
Yes. Can I get a motion on the meeting minutes for September 7th, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Landris, second by Fondabarnardi. Any discussion? No discussion. We had no public comments still, I'm imagining, so if we can go to a vote?
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tulkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Sorry, tried to unmute, yes.
And Chair Reese.
Yes. Great, moving on. We have no actions under items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and we get to 8. I want to make sure everyone knows that there was a written communication on our agenda. We'll acknowledge that. Then we'll move on to 9 and discussion items. Versus 9A, a presentation by the Water Resource Staff on impacts of drought and water cell sufficiency. I'm going to announce the caller key is open on this. I assume we're, we're taking public comment. And with that, ask staff to give us their presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sunny Wayne, the city's Water Resources Manager. I'm in charge of our water and wastewater utility. Thank you for having me here tonight. And I have a presentation to share with you all regarding the current drought condition as well as the impacts on the city's water supply and our water cells. One second, let's share my screen. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
So tonight was just an overview on our, the current drought condition across the state, some background to put things in. And, and then I'll, I'll talk about our urban water management plan and the projections there in relation to the. The Vena housing units as well as the latest revision that may have our water supply. Just to provide a background, the current drought, I'm sure a lot of you have seen in the news, the. The condition in Lake Mead and the Colorado River as well as in our state water project. Climate change continues to challenge the reliability and the resiliency of. Meaning the higher average temperatures, the more intense heat waves and wildfires. And not how that have impact is really how we traditionally have captured water and how we've relied on the snowpack. Both in the Rockies as well as in this here Nevada mountains. Because climate change with these higher temperatures, heat waves, wildfires, what we use to capture is becoming less and less. Because the snowpack melts much faster and so it doesn't necessarily end up into our rivers and reservoirs that capture the surface water supply. It could get seeped into dry soil because of the wildfires or. It gets evaporated because the temperature changes are much faster nowadays mean the snow melts much faster and evaporates. So that's really the impact in how we traditionally have captured water supply and serve the whole state of California. And persistent drought, western drought conditions, not just in California, but also across the southwest United States. Across the seven states that rely on Colorado as a major source of water supply. So the state's response in, in March of this year, from the governor's executive order, they called on all water suppliers to implement their stage two water shortage response action, which is reducing. Twenty percent of water used from the twenty thirteen baseline. For us cities, Santa Monica, we actually been in the stage two ever since the last drought in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. We actually maintain those levels. A lot of cities backed off on that. But we, we kept our foot on the gas and maintained that and our residents doing a great job in conserving and meeting, in that response. And to continue to encourage water conservation efforts and improve drought resiliency through voluntary actions. Develop regulations to grant irrigation and non-fusional perp, this is at like business parks or if you. Live in a, a large HOA community. Where you have parkways and, and you know, little obedience that's just blonde, they, they've actually asked us to stop irrigating that. Several other actions outlined in the executive order from the governor. Regional response, Metropolitan Water District, which is our regional water wholesaler that a lot of cities. Rely on for either entirety of his water supply or supplemental supply like we do here at the city. They declared emergency conditions for state water project dependent areas in late eight. It is some confusion in the area because they had restrictions out there irrigation to one day per week. Starting June first or comply with monthly allocation limits. That's established based on human health and safety means. So you have two ways to. This created a lot of confusion where everybody thought if you're in the vet service area, you had to comply with this. But this is only for state water project dependent areas. So on this map is the darker orange. Areas that solely depend on the state water project that had to adhere to the, these rules. In the lighter orange areas that we see the combination of state water project and Colorado River. You didn't, you were still safe from those, those restrictions at the time. And the reason for that is in years past, Metropolitan Water District had made huge investments in storage reservoirs. Out in Riverside County, San Bernardino, to store Colorado River dirt water during wet year. So they actually have sufficient amount of storage to allow us to try to ride out these mega droughts. And looking at local drought response, outdoor water restriction implemented across several communities in Southern California, we're not. Alone in that. LADWP went to two days a week, Beverly Hills, Culver City, they all went to two days. For water restriction. There's certain areas like Las Vegas Municipal Water District that serves Malibu, Calabasas, Agora Hills and other areas nearby us, they went to one day per week. Outdoor water restrictions. What are we doing here at the city or in our ongoing water conservation? As I mentioned, we've been in a stage two water shortage stage since twenty fourteen and we continue to maintain that. And that was adopted by council in twenty twenty two to continue those actions. We're also implementing our outdoor water restriction, two days per week that started July sixth of this year. Which I think our, our residents are really responding to. If you compare July of this year, twenty twenty two to July of twenty twenty one. We saw about an eight to nine percent reduction in total water consumption. And overall, our city has been doing great too, as in terms of residential average, we're using less than eighty gallons per person per day, which is. Really great compared to somewhere our neighboring cities and what they're doing. Now moving on to our water supply and this is probably the big question that we've been asked quite a bit, especially with. This, you know, housing units that's being planned. In our twenty twenty urban water management plan, we looked at water supply reliability, impact on water self-sufficiency. We updated our water shortage contingency plan and also looked at compliance with the state's conservation requirements. So we developed in twenty twenty urban water management plan, just some background, this is every five years to assess future water supply reliability. With the planning horizon for this plan extends out to twenty fifty. Key consideration that was new for this iteration was climate change impacts, regulation and land use. And on here, I have the water drops as some of you have seen. The direction that we were given by city council to develop a pathway to achieve water self-sufficiency. That was documented in our twenty eighteen sustainable water master plan. Where we're looking to move to the twenty twenty three water drop there where we're decreasing our imported water reliance from. About thirty, forty percent right now to one percent. So we're targeting ninety nine percent of local water self-sufficiency by leveraging local water supplies. That was the goal, that was the target in twenty eighteen. But as you know, several things have happened since twenty nineteen. One thing was the COVID nineteen pandemic. And also the other is the regional housing needs assessment. At the time was nine thousand additional housing units by twenty thirty. But that has gone up to about thirteen thousand or a little over thirteen thousand. One thing I'll mention about the COVID nineteen pandemic and why that's relevant. In the last decade, in terms of total water use per year, our lowest water use was actually in twenty twenty. This is shut down, tourism kind of came to a halt. That was actually our lowest water use year. Of the last decade is because of the pandemic. And our water supply reliability assessment scenarios consider various scenarios, a normal year. A single dry year through twenty forty. Multiple dry years, you could have a five-year consecutive drought, kind of like what we're in right now. We're right now currently in the third year. A third consecutive year of a drought year, right? And also a drought risk assessment and what happens occurring. So looking at water supply reliability assessment, we looked at the populations and that's how we project our, our water demand and availability. How to meet those. If you look at our twenty eighteen sustainable water master plan that is shown in green here. Those were the population projections when we developed in our water master plan or the latest iteration. As a result of the, the twenty twenty Vena units, the nine thousand units, we had to increase the population projection. As you see, there's, as well as ten percent increase or so in population and meaning. More demand, but we also had to revise our off conservation program to try to. To serve more water in order to try to help serve these additional. So if you look at our water demand of actual and then protected use. One key thing here is you see the water demand is actually has been increasing steadily. On that trend, even though we have slight population increases. As a result of the conservation efforts that several agencies implemented in twenty fourteen, this is kind of where that decline really began. We, we sort of decoupled the rate of population growth and water, water demand. Before they kind of moved together in a similar slope, but because of conservation efforts, we decoupled. That doesn't mean water demand is increasing. It's, it's increasing at a lower rate now or, or a flattish slope if you compare the two. So the blue line and the green line are the projected water use with the conservation efforts we want to implement to help reduce overall. Water demand. So the green was projected with additional conservation. Blue is projected without additional conservation. Just to highlight how important conservation programs are and can continue to invest in. And we'll, we'll touch upon why the conservation piece is so important in the later slides. So in our water supply reliability assessment, we also are available water supply to it. These are the key assumptions we made. As you all know, we rely heavily on our global groundwater supply for over half of our drinking water needs. And we use the low end of that sustainable. The sustainable yield is estimate of how much water we could extract in a sustainable manner that we're not depleting our. We're not drawing more than what could be replenished. And we use the low end of that sustainable yield for our supply analysis, which is about eleven thousand eight hundred acre feet a year. We also assume the completion of our water self-sufficiency projects that are all on track to be completed next year. Our sustainable water infrastructure project is coming online later this year. And then our upgrades at our water treatment plant, the living well for restoration, that's all coming along online fall of next year. The other thing we assume, we assume we have access to the tier one allotment of Metropolitan Water District's imported water. Which is about seven thousand four hundred six acre feet a year. We didn't assume any use of the tier two allotment. Those are just different pricing. The tier one will allow that much water at a certain price and tier two is the second allotment at a higher price. So in our assessment, we assume not using any of the tier two allotment in our imported water. So the assessment period was from twenty ten to twenty twenty. And, and for a normal year is the average during, for a normal year demand, we looked at average during the ten-year period. A single dry year, we looked at the lowest groundwater pump during that period. And for multiple dry year, we assume the running average, we looked at the, the lowest five-year, five consecutive years. One thing I want to highlight is when the state looks at this, they only look at our total access to available. That's both local water supply as well as our access to imported water supply. They don't factor in local policies such as water sufficiency and our goal to reduce revise our imported water supply. So that's a key fact to remember, I would say, that's between, you know, available supply, local policies and how do we meet these future developments? So if you look at a normal dry year in our projection. From forty. We have enough supply to meet those average demands. And actually we have a little more because we don't need to take all seven thousand acre feet of the mid-water. I apologize, I might have missed over, I think our planning period I mentioned was twenty fifty, it's actually twenty forty for the planning period. And for a single dryer, this is one dry drought year and looking at what that supplies available to us and what the demand is. You can see down here for those projected years, we still have a little bit of surplus, so we are able to meet in a single dry year as well. And these are assessments for the five instead of drought years in the twenty twenty five, twenty thirty, twenty thirty five, twenty forty period. I'll highlight here in, in all cases, at the end of that five year, we still have a little bit of surplus in available water supply to it. And this is with the projected additional nine thousand units. Right, but as you can tell, in twenty thirty five and twenty forty, these, these bottom three here, we're getting pretty close to the bottom, right? If that nine thousand housing units is revised to thirteen thousand or so. We might need to tap into the tier two allotment. But we still have water supply available. Back then in our twenty twenty urban water management, we didn't think we needed to tap into that tier two allotment. But if those, those numbers would get revised up, we would need to either tap into that tier two allotment in the future. Or look at other local supply options, I think. Right, there are other options where we're already kind of throwing on the board and then looking at a feasibility. One of those may be seawater desell or regional partnerships on a seawater desell project. Some ideas have been kind of tossing around for a long range planning right now. So how does that impact our water self-sufficiency or our local? Right, with the additional nine thousand housing unit, that ninety nine percent goal will go ninety percent. If we didn't step up our conservation, continue to invest in that, we would probably drop to eighty. And we're looking at anywhere between eighty, ninety percent because of, it, it really relies on how well our, our residents and community really respond to the additional consum. That may be needed to help bridge that gap. That we can find additional supplies, right? So conservation is a critical piece and it plays a critical role in our water supply outlook. It's moving towards behavioral changes and how long we take showers and, you know, do we capture? Water when, when you go to, when you start showering, the water's coming out cold, maybe you need to take, capture that water and we use that instead of letting it just go loose. Right, it's going to be behavioral changes that's going to be important for us to conserve more water. So as a summary, our, our urban water track confirmed that supplier reliable. The ability to achieve a ninety percent water self-sufficiency with additional nine thousand housing units. Did some quick estimates with the planning for additional thirteen thousand six hundred units. What is that impact? So I'm looking at probably eighty, eighty-five percent water self-sufficiency. And that we may need to tap into tier two allotment for consecutive drought years. If we have another five-year consecutive drought, we may have to tap into that tier two allotment. Or we may need to develop additional local water supplies in the future, you know, in the twenty thirty five, twenty forty years. In the future. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Great, I was muted. I'm going to start with Commissioner Landers, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, thank you for this terrific presentation. And I, I really, and again, as Commissioner Lambert, I think, did at the last meeting, we really appreciate staff putting this on the agenda. My question is about water recycling and I'll ask it in two ways. To what extent is water recycling a factor in the analysis that you're doing? And as we are the planning commission and we are looking at things like development standards. To what extent do we need to think about requiring recycling capacity in new developments? I, I say this today, I just happened to take a tour of a multifamily building. And I got up on the roof and there was no photovoltaic. And then we went down to the garage and there was not a single EV stubout. And, you know, five, six, seven years ago, we would have thought, okay, that would have been progressive, but you don't look for it. And today I thought, where the heck is it? This is unacceptable. So I imagine that in twen, in ten years. We'll be looking at buildings that don't have water recycling and saying that this is archaic and irresponsible. So I'm wondering, you know, A, how is the strategy and B. Should we as planning commissioners be thinking about that as we, you know, move forward?
Those are great questions and I'll ask the first one regarding water recycling and feel free to jump in if I didn't hear the question correctly. As far as water recycling, we're taking it to the, I would say the next level. Right, with the sustainable water infrastructure project for SWIP, the advanced treated recycled water coming out of there. But what that allows us to do is we could use that for non-portable uses. We could also use that water to recharge our groundwater. So it's going to be a big step forward and there's a lot of first of its kind in that facility we're implementing in California. To be at the forefront of that. We're also leveraging our stormwater urban runoff to have the first stormwater direct injection project in the state. To replenish our local groundwater. So when that facility comes online, we actually have more recycled water available. So we're going to be busy looking for customers. We're about to embark on our recycle water map, trying to update that. And we plan on, we already have Caltrans, Santa Monica Unified talking to us about getting recycled water to the school fields, to irrigate on freeways for Caltrans. So we're in the works of that, but we're really looking at that to replenish. As far as the limitation on the project, we're capturing as much as we can. The challenge there is because of nighttime flows. During the day, we have a lot of wastewater. Fourteen million gallons. But during the night, whenever we're sleeping, it's only about one and one and a half million gallon per day available. So our capacity is actually limited by the nighttime flows unless we build large storage tanks during the day to capture raw wastewater, which is really hard to manage. And so we're doing everything we can on the water recycling front, also setting new standards for utilities in California. Your second question about development. We recently adopted, this was fairheaded by our process engineer Alex Wade. It developed the city's first recycle water ordinance. Where it requires all new developments starting next year to be dual-plummed. As long, as long as they're within our recycle water user. So it's not across the whole city, it's where we could get our infrastructure to. Right, where we currently have our recycle water backbone that could serve them. So. That's already in our code for new developments to incorporate dual plumbing in their development. And, and example would be St. John's, you know, as you guys know, St. John's is going to be redeveloped that campus and we've been talking to them. About the recycle water ordinance and have agreed to extend our line to them to get to them as soon as possible to help them with their development to. Decrease their portable water demand. So it's.
That's great, thank you very much. Terrific, thank you. And, and I, I may have to sign off in a few minutes, so if I do, I will do so quietly. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Lambert, did you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. It sounds from what you're saying that everything is fine, even with the reigning units being added to the supply, which is good news. I have a couple of questions. Um, it sounds from what you're saying that everything is fine, even with the Raina units being added to the supply, um, which is good news. I had some questions about your population projections. You have basically going from 100,000 to 109,000 over the next, during the course of the Raina production, what have you? So that's 9,000 additional people. But we're actually talking about 9,000 units. So it's probably a great deal more than 9,000 people. Unless you only have one person in every apartment unit, which is doubtful. So I I don't know if that makes a difference to your analysis or not, um, but it's an issue. Um, and I I want to understand this. What you're saying is that in 2023, we will be at 60% self-sufficiency? Does that number? Pardon?
90%.
Your 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 drop says 60%.
That's groundwater.
That's groundwater.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So d- d- does that change over the course of the production of the Raina units? Didn't figure that out.
Yeah. So that was based on 2018 numbers. So that those those makeups will change. So because the Raina units, you see imported water will probably increase from one to like ten. And the rest, the rest of the number will kind of move with it. Those are uh from when we did the 2018 master plan, and that does not include the water drops.
I also want to join Sean and thank you for coming. This is really a wonderful thing for you to be doing for us because it's water has been an issue at first during the whole production of the housing element and how all these units are going to affect our water supply. So I appreciate your being here.
I'm more than happy to come. And nobody, nobody cares about water unless this is drought or something else that happens.
No, we care about it. We care about it. We only complain. So I mean, I think actually that periodically every few years would be good to have you back before us and kind of tell us where we are as the Raina producer, you just start being produced. Uh, I think that'd be really useful. Um, and then my final, my final questions are tier one and tier two of MWD water. Does that come from the Colorado River?
It's a mixture of state water and coal.
And and all the dire warnings we've been reading in the Times forever, that's not going to, about the Colorado, that's not affecting tier one and tier two? And and whatever availability of that we need?
Not right now. So the the investment that Met has made in their large storage reservoir. Again, pouring Colorado River on the California side during wet years when the demand wasn't that high. Right. So they'd be storing that water. They stored enough for about five years uh in their large reservoir as a sort of um their service area. But I will say that next, well, this coming winter, um, January, February, March is going to be very critical. What the snowpack looks like, how much of it makes it into our our reservoirs, um, both in the Colorado and up in Northern California. Because like I said, it's the it's the third year of the drought, right? I think they have about five years of storage. So the next year or two is going to be very critical uh and what happens in the environment. It's 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 very complicated, I would say, on the Colorado because of water rights. Right. There's C O R I, uh, water rights.
All right. I've read about that. That's impossible. Can't understand any of it.
No, and those those rights were established in 1920s. Right. And nobody, nobody wants to give up, especially the imperial.
So what you're saying is conceivably the MWD water supply could go down over the next five or 10 years based on what's happening with the Colorado.
Yeah. And that's why they're they're investing in a major water recycling project for Southern California. They're looking to build a 150 million gallon per day water recycling facility similar to ours. Ours is one million gallon per day. So they're building something that's 100 times larger. That's in their planning process in the future to try to make up for that gap.
Thank you. I promise this is my final question. Is it true, I believe it is, that multifamily housing buildings use less water than almost, other than public storage? Any other land use there is? I mean, multifamily housing is one of the least intensive water users?
In in terms of like residential, yes.
And probably commercial, I would think, too.
It depends on what the commercial is.
Okay.
Because commercial is a broad category, right? So you have hotels, someone has a commercial, and you have office buildings as well, right? Those office buildings, if there's just restaurants, it doesn't use that much water.
But it's much less intensive on a per unit basis than, for example, single family homes, obviously.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you so much, Sunny, again. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Other commissioner questions? Uh, Commissioner Raskin.
I think Mario had his hand up before.
I, you know, I don't see Mario on my screen right now, and I was surprised I could not see him. So Mario, if you are there.
And here, I can see myself on the screen, so.
Now I, now I see you. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, thanks, Sunny, again for coming. And we've seen you last week, which was great. I have a couple of questions. Uh, where is the current recycled water piping extended to today? What what boulevard does it go down? Where where is it? How far is it developing?
It's actually very easy to explain. I don't have to bring home a map. It's an L shape. So it starts at where Smurf and Pacific Center is. It goes up Ocean Avenue to San Vicente. It terminates at San Vicente and Ocean Ave. And then it heads inward inland on Colorado, then it jogs over to Olympic, and it ends at the city arms right now.
Uh, and is there any reason that it went up at the beginning to San Vicente? That's such a a low.
Yeah, the history behind that is because when Smurf, the Santa Monica Urban Recycling Facility was built 20 years ago, it was not a primitive facility. It was a best management practice facility. So we were only allowed to use it for irrigation. So that's why the primarily Ocean Ave for Palisades Park, right? And we were allowed to hook up two dual plum building. But they wouldn't do us, they won't allow us to hook up anymore to LA County Public Health because it didn't have permit.
Okay.
That's that's why it went up Ocean Avenue before.
So, um, and then now back to the big questions, which are, um, the SWIP is going to provide us how many acre feet? What's what's the what's the estimate?
Total with the uh SWIP, which includes the upgraded Smurf facility. So Smurf, uh, you have to remember, it was designed to treat up to ha- uh, 0.5 or half million gallon per day of water. But because it relies on stormwater urban runoff, there's there's a rain down off, and it only treats on average about 100,000 gallons instead of the 500,000 gallons it's designed to treat. So upgrading that will get to the full potential, 500 gallons, 500,000 gallons per day out of Smurf. Out of the new mass water treatment facility, we're able to produce 1 million gallons per day. So together is 1.5 million gallons per day or roughly 1,600 acre feet a year.
Uh, and then that that recycled water is going into the um into our water recharge, and it's also going into our purple pipe system. And how how do you determine whether it's recharging the water table or being used actively? What's the what's the trade off there?
Well, what um what goes into like irrigation? Right? Just like your water service, they'll have a meter so we know how much is consumed through those meter. At the recharge wells, we have a flow meters as well to know how much is actually going to the recharge well. So they're all monitored by flow meters going from, um, whether it's non-portable use or groundwater.
So so but what I was asking is how do you choose where to, you can control both? How many, how much water do you inject for storing, how much water you actually use daily or annually? I mean, it's under your control. How do you decide? Because I assume you have more demand than those 1,600 acre feet.
Right now, right now, there's more supply than there is.
Okay.
Our city's non-portable, non-portable demand right now projected to grow about half a, half a million gallon per day, so about third of the capacity that we could produce. That that's sort of the projected growth of non-portable recycled water demand. But we're going to look at that in our master plan. So we have about 1 million gallon per day of water variable to detect. Right now, our injection well could only take about half of that. We're looking for additional injection. Where we could put in more to inject more. So we have about half million gallon per day of injection wells, either in construction or in design.
Okay. So I noticed your your supply was about 18,000 acre feet and it was flat. The foreseeable five year window or 15 year, if you only go to 2040 or so. Uh, i- is that realistic? Is that, how do you keep it flat? What's the what's the trick there? Is that we're just using MWD as a giant spring to absorb all the differences?
Flat. Uh, are you talking about the water demand and projected use that chart?
I'm talking about supply, the water supply, which was at 18,000.
Oh, right. Yeah, it's it's because of the met. Right. The tier water allotment. So we look at how much we produce local supply. And then we add about the 7,000 or so from met and get to the 18,000.
Okay. And um, so part of this is that when you assume the water will increase, you're using, what's your per person usage to calculate that water increase to absorb the 9,000 units? What's the what's the number of gallons per person per day or per unit per day? What's the what's the number?
I don't know the actual breakdown from like single family, multi. The number that I have on the top of my head is the 80 gallon per person per day on resident. Um, those are numbers that we use uh to project the increased water demand. And then we also factor in conservation of what we may be able to achieve. And we also factor in with the state goals. The state goal right now is for us to be about 55 gallon per person per day for indoor. And I hear rumblings of that 55 going down to 45 or 40 in the near future.
Well, that's way below even what Australia does. Now, right now, our hotels are at about 70% capacity. And our normal is about 85, sometimes 90% on a good summer. Is that factor into your recovery cycle of our our use here?
Yeah, let's look at it. We look at it from an ad on average and a total limit. That that fluctuation in capacity is is factored in. In terms of like water demand, what we're seeing now is we're returning, we're right about pre-COVID levels. It's sort of our water demand. So that is considered because it's over, we look at a 10 year cycle. So that is factored into it all.
And the uh, and the difference in cost between the tier one and tier two water from the Metropolitan Water District? What is that that cost?
Tier one right now is about $1,100. What? Tier two is about $200 an acre foot more.
$200 more?
$200 more is about 1,300 or so.
Okay. So that would be easily absorbed by a water fee increase that's projected over the next years, two years, how much?
So our our rate study, the five year rate study is adopted in five years, but every five years we do a rate. And yeah, the met met rate increases is obviously factored into that. And we look at what the historical increase has been.
Okay.
Just one more, one more fact to add add about the hotels, the the difference is we do factor it in, but about, I think, 60, 70% of our water.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last words. What you said, 60, 70% of what?
60 to 70% of our total water use in the city is
There's something happened, Sunny, that every time you get to the punchline, we don't hear you.
Oh, that's that's intended. I was going to say residential water use in the city accounts at anywhere.
That's unbelievable.
Is this better if I turn off my video?
Maybe. I don't.
Let me try without the video, or I could type it in the chat. Residential water use totals 60 to 70%. The majority of our water use in the city is still from resident.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We heard that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. It was a little comic relief. We appreciate it. Uh, any other questions, Commissioner Fonda Benardi?
No, I'm done.
Okay. And I apologize. I didn't see you there. Commissioner Raskin.
Thanks. I've just got one, one question. Uh, you know, coastal communities up and down California are preparing for uh, a climate change future in which rising sea levels will affect the salinity of groundwater tables. And I'm curious if you could speak to how that would affect our uh local water planning here?
Yeah. So uh, in 2014, the state adopted the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act where we had to form a groundwater sustainability agency and work with our our partners. It's like a forced marriage. So it's us, Beverly Hills, Culver City, City of LA, and LA County that's a part of that. And we we recently put out our first draft, first edition of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And the sustainable management criteria is outlined in there. One of those is seawater intrusion. So we look at chloride levels. So um, if the chloride levels in our groundwater were to approach 500 milligrams per liter, that's an indicator of seawater intrusion. Look at a monitoring levels to to look at that over time to make sure seawater isn't being over, we're over drawing. That's why we sustainably hold it in order. If we're over pumping, that's how seawater make its make its way in. Um, currently, our chlor- chloride levels in our groundwater is less than 200, I believe. Is is well off of the 500 milli- milligram target. So we monitor that to make sure. And based on analysis that was done by the consultant, the risk of seawater intrusion for the entire basin actually is from Marina. It actually comes through Marina Del Rey and then makes its way up towards our well field. So we have ample of time and location and distances to be able to monitor that. One of the things we're working on is putting a monitoring well closer to the Marina Del Rey locations. We'll have a earlier detection of that.
So just to follow up, I mean, you know, say 50 years from now, there there is substantial intrusion or levels way up. You know, what 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 infrastructure mitigation can we implement to take care of that?
I I would be retired by then, so that's one mitigating measure. It's the groundwater injection well. So if you look at what Orange groundwater injection unit.
I mean, we're having the same problem where you're cutting out.
Okay, let me try without the video then. Am I back? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay. Sorry that was probably a bad joke when I said I would be retired and no help. Sorry about that. Um, we would do more in the groundwater injection to create a natural barrier like what Orange County and what West Basin does in the West Coast Barrier. Did that come through?
Okay, great. Doc, Vice Chair, Raskin, you've, all your questions?
That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I think Commissioner Tolkien had a comment or question?
Yeah. Thank you, Sunny, for coming. I just have one question. Other than the MWD, do we have any other place for getting water other than desalinization or something like that?
Currently, no. Currently, we don't have any other other means other than metropolitan, or we look at additional local supplies like seawater desal or more recycling through partnerships.
Can't hear you.
He he said they don't have any other sources of D or D sal other right now.
Thank you.
All right. Maybe it's my microphone. Is this any better?
That's better. I think it is your microphone. Last week, it sounded a little better.
Yeah, I think my headset died.
Well, just in time, I think we're done asking you questions. Anybody else have questions right now? Okay, great. I think we're we're done peppering you with questions. And again, we really appreciate you coming out and educating us on this. And we will ask you to come back and continue to do this and keep us heading in the right direction.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Sunny.
Okay. Um, we did open the public comment, I think, on that, and I'm wondering if we picked up a public commenter?
Don't have any calls right now.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, and I'm going to move on to item, the main event here, which is 9B, discussion and review of the final draft of the revised six cycle housing element. Like to open the public poll in queue and then ask staff to give us a presentation.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to wait for the presentation to fire up here. There we go. Um, so we're here tonight just to kind of give you a, what we're calling just a housing element refresher. And kind of, you know, run through an overview of the housing element in preparation um of your vote tomorrow night. So this is really an opportunity to, uh, you know, walk through the programs of the housing element with you. Um, there's really nothing different here than what you saw in June, um, but we recognize it's been three months. And a lot has happened in between, and it's just probably helpful, um, just so the commission has an understanding of what the latest and greatest housing element says. So as I indicated, you know, there's there's no changes proposed at this point uh with the housing element with the exception of updates to implementation dates. So the September 2022 red line that you see posted on the Planning Commission agenda, the red lines you see there are only to do with the timing of implementation for each housing element program. Um, that is based on a change in housing element law. At the time that we were doing the June draft, the governor had not yet, um, you know, signed the bill into law that provided additional time to do rezoning, you know. So there, there were changes in the law that have happened since that time. So the timing mechanisms you see in there really reflect, you know, the sort of what I'll call two pathways, um, you know, that could happen with respect to whether or not we make it by October 15th or we don't. Um, and so, you know, that's why it doesn't have a specific date in there anymore. Uh, you know, it, it basically says one year or three years from October 15th, 2021, which is statutory deadline as applicable per Government Code Section 65583.4. So those are the only changes, um, you know, that are, uh, being proposed at this point. Otherwise, everything is exactly as HCD had seen it. Um, and, you know, led them to, um, transmit to the city, uh, the letter on September 6th indicating that our draft revised housing element, um, is in compliance with or will be in compliance with housing element law once, um, the city council adopts it and HCD deems it compliant. Um, so next slide. Uh, so just a refresher on key housing element deadlines. So October 15th, 2021 was the statutory deadline for the six-cycle housing element. That was the deadline by which cities, um, should have adopted a compliant housing element. And it is HCD's position that in order for it to be compliant, it's not that just the city adopts it. It means that it needs to be adopted by the city, transmitted to HCD to certify that is in fact, um, in compliance, uh, with state housing element law. Um, there is, uh, the, a subsequent date after that, February 12, 2022, which was an extra 120 days to adopt a compliant housing element in order to avoid updating it every four years. Um, however, there was a change, uh, to that provision that took effect in January 1 of this year that replaced that extra, you know, that, that provision about the updating every four years with the requirements that, that you rezone for your arena by October 15th, 2022. Um, so that was a change that was made by AB 1398. Next slide. Um, and a- as you heard me indicate, uh, there has been a further change, uh, again, made this year uh, because so many cities were, were deemed out of compliance within SCAG. So everybody was facing the October 15th, 2022 rezoning deadline, you know, to be, continue to be deemed out of compliance. And so, um, there is new relief that is in Government Code Section 65583.4 that provides cities, um, an additional three years and 120 days to complete rezoning. Um, but you have to meet certain conditions. And you can see that we do meet those first two, which is that our statutory deadline, uh, was in the 2021 calendar year, that we failed to adopt a six-cycle housing element within 120 days of that statutory deadline. So we missed both deadlines. And then the third one is what we're trying to work towards is that the city adopts the six-cycle housing element and HCD finds the adopted element to be in substantial compliance with housing element law. So what that means, and that's the process that we are working towards now, um, is that the, uh, we're working towards an October 11th date with the city council. It means that the city must adopt the housing element, uh, that we transmit it to HCD and that they turn around a letter to us basically in a matter of days. Um, you know, to be found in compliance with housing element law. So that is, that third point is what we are trying to get to in order to qualify for additional time to complete the rezoning and for the city to be deemed in compliance um, with housing element law. Next slide. Uh, so what does it mean to be out of compliance? So right now, what's happening now, you know, because the city is currently out of compliance? Um, one of the biggest penalties is the ability for any applicant to, uh, submit a project to the city that has 20% onsite units affordable to lower income households. Um, or the project is 100% moderate units. Um, and the city must approve that project, um, even if the project exceeds zoning or lose maximum. So that is something that you may hear colloquially called the builder's remedy project. Um, it is a provision that lives in the Housing Accountability Act. Um, and it is intended, um, as a penalty, um, to cities who are out of compliance in their housing elements. Um, you can see another immediate impact is that there's currently, we are ineligible for some funding sources um, that require the city to be, um, in compliance with its housing element. Um, so that does affect funding for affordable housing. Um, and, you know, if, if we don't make that October 15th, 2022 deadline, the city will basically continue to be out of compliance. You know, if we, because we are not in a position at this point to be completing all of our rezoning by October 15th, uh, 2022. Um, you know, so that provision with respect to builder's remedy projects will continue to be available as long as the city is out of compliance and until we complete our rezoning. Um, you can see a fourth consequence that sort of kicks in as of October 15th. Um, you know, because if that rezoning is not done by that date, there's also that the city has to approve any project that has at least 49% of the housing units affordable to very low, low and moderate, um, income households. And, you know, of course, the state can start enforcement proceedings against the city at any point in time. Um, next slide. Um, talking more about long-term consequences of this is sort of, you know, uh, once we get into compliance, you know, then you have to remain in compliance sort of thing. Um, uh, one thing on the horizon is SB 35, um, which is an annual determination that the, that HCD makes each year in terms of looking at, you know, where cities are at in terms of actual production, like issuance of building permits or, um, housing projects. And it's done on a per-rated basis over the eight-year cycle. Um, so if the city isn't needing, you know, the amount of building permits issued relative to its, um, per-rated arena, um, you know, and you can see it's sort of divided into categories of the above moderate numbers are not met. You know, then there's a streamlined process for projects with at least 10% affordability. If the lower income arena isn't met, then there's a streamlined process for projects with at least 50% affordability and requires ministerial approval for housing projects. There, there's a slew of other sort of preconditions, you know, that applicants, um, have to meet. So this is something that applicants have to opt into. It's not an automatic, they have to choose to, um, you know, elect to, to seek an SB 35 project. Um, it includes things, you know, including prevailing wage and, and things like that. Um, so that, that is something that, you know, becomes available, um, you know, with basically the APR reports every April. You know, we will, we will learn whether Santa Monica is on that SB 35, uh, list or not. Next slide. Uh, as we've noted throughout this process, um, you know, one of the reasons, um, you know, why we've, we've taken some time with respect to, uh, bringing forward the draft is that the city also has to prepare an EIR addendum. Um, because, uh, the February, HCD's February comment letter, um, essentially required the city to study, you know, approximately 2,000 additional units um, than we had originally studied in the EIR that was certified in October 2021 for the housing element in order to accommodate arenas. So that effectively exceeded the maximum capacity that we had previously studied. Um, the EIR addendum, um, is, uh, you know, nearly done, but it's been prepared to disclose the impacts of those additional units. And it's being finalized and it'll be posted with the October 11th, uh, 2022 city council agenda um, for the city councils, uh, review and final action. Next slides. Um, so what happens, um, after tonight? So where we are is here, uh, with the Planning Commission in terms of a refresher on the housing element. Um, tomorrow night will be the Planning Commission's formal, uh, recommendation to the city council. So you'll be voting, um, to make a recommendation on the housing element. October 11th will be the city council's, uh, public hearing, um, on the, uh, revised, um, housing element. And if the city council approves it, um, it will be transmitted to HCD, um, uh, you know, potentially that same evening. Um, and, uh, HCD then, um, will need to certify, you know, review and certify the revised housing on October 15th in order for us to qualify for that extra three years and 120 days to complete the rezoning. Um, what happens after that is that we intend to then, you know, begin zoning red lines review with the Planning Commission, um, starting on October the 11th. And next slide, um, we're just sharing sort of this tentative schedule with you right now is what we anticipate, um, between now and the end of the year. Um, in terms of, uh, what, what we anticipate is doing sort of topical meetings with the Planning Commission. So this is giving you a flavor of, you know, um, the sort of big buckets, um, of topics that we're gonna be covering in the zoning ordinance, starting with development standards, getting into the AHPP density bonus, definitions of a housing project, um, standards for special uses, um, for the different kinds of special housing element programs we have, you know, like the community assembly uses, uh, multiple unit dwellings, um, surface parking lots. We have the brand new moderate income housing overlay. Uh, we of course have SB 9 and the crossover to ADUs and sort of updates to the ADU ordinance. And in accordance with H, HCD's evolving interpretations, um, of ADU law, um, parking, uh, is gonna be a topic as well. Um, there are some new state laws that have passed in the legislature this year, um, you know, that we are still absorbing. Um, and we'll be integrating, um, into our zoning ordinance. And so you can see here, um, this, this presentation has already been posted online since, um, last week. So you have this available. Um, and we'll be sending out a poll to the commission. You can see there's a couple of special meetings, you know, that will need to be added so that we have plenty of time to be able to go through this. So it's gonna be a very, very busy, um, fall uh, with the commission. And we will be talking about zoning red lines at every single meeting, um, between now and, uh, through January. Um, you know, I think what we're aiming to do is to bring the zoning red lines to the city council. Um, you know, uh, early, uh, next year. Um, you know, so we're trying to, to continue to move forward, um, with that schedule. Um, next slide. Uh, now, now we're gonna move into sort of the refresher. That's just sort of an overview of where we are in the process, what we're doing, um, you know, and kind of, uh, uh, where, where we are, um, in terms of, you know, this journey for the housing element. And, uh, for tonight's, um, just a refresher on the programs is you're actually gonna hear from the housing team that's been working on all of this. So we're gonna run through the programs in the housing element, um, in terms of housing production, affordable housing production, firmly furthering for housing and housing stability. Um, I will say that, uh, you know, we are going through each program. If at any point in time, you know, you feel like you kind of heard enough or you wanna move on or something, you know, please feel free to, um, unmute and, and let us know. We're happy to move on to the next slide since, you know, um, we weren't sure to what level, um, the commission, you know, wanted refreshers on, on each programs. And, and certainly after this presentation, you know, they'll be having time for questions and discussion as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ross.
Thanks, Jane. Uh, so to start this section of the presentation off, uh, we will be focusing on all the programs that deal with housing production. Um, I do wanna note, there are additional programs that we will talk about later in the presentation that also deal with housing production, but some of those have dual purposes. So they were better suited for other, uh, categories. Uh, so to begin, uh, Program 1A was the implementation of buy rate approvals for housing projects. Uh, the objective was really to provide certainty for housing providers. And what this is really geared to do was to make the, what we've actually been doing for the last two and a half years of making the majority of housing projects as administrative approvals actually codified into code. So what would be entailed would be buy rate approvals for 100% affordable housing projects. Um, any housing project that was code compliant, that were receiving, uh, uh, modifications and waivers. So this was non-downtown housing projects and any downtown project that were, uh, did not exceed tier two. Um, and also any housing projects on the fifth cycle housing element sites inventory that included at least 20% onsite affordable units, uh, per Government Code 65583.2. Uh, it also will be entailing written procedures on how we will be implementing SB 35 and ultimately facilitating consolidation of sites for housing projects by continuing to process administrative latte agreements. The next program is Program 1B, uh, the Streamline Designer View and Objective Design Standards uh, for housing approvals. So this was really to gear to increase staff level approvals for small housing projects. These typically are gonna be the housing projects that the Planning Commission doesn't see already. It was the projects that are located on the R2, 3 and 4, uh, parcels. Uh, so kind of like the four-unit condo condominium projects. But we are still looking at expediting designer view for larger projects by potentially moving, um, A or B review to the beginning of the entitlement process. Um, and we also wanna ensure that the design review cannot unreasonably delay any housing projects. So we'd be limiting number of hearings and time limits. And then ultimately working on developing objective design standards. Program 1D, uh, is meant to be reducing minimum parking requirements for housing projects. Uh, the original intent of this, uh, program was to reduce housing projects parking requirements to overlay one rates, which are already reduced parking minimums in relation to citywide, um, standards. However, we did wanna note that there is new state law, AB 2097, that appears to be eliminating all minimum parking requirements for both residential and commercial projects within one half mile of major transit. So a new state law might be, uh, pushing us even further than we intended, uh, with this program. Uh, Program 1E is, uh, to revise the design standards for the Bergamot Area Plan. Uh, really, this is meant to be geared towards providing far more clarity in the regulatory environment uh, to incentivize housing projects in Bergamot Area, which we have not seen, uh, since the adoption of the plan. Uh, and so this could be anything from modifying building modulate, modulation standards to ground floor uses to open space. Uh, and it's largely connected to a grant that we've already been undertaking to look at objective design standards citywide, but also using Bergamot Area as kind of a jumping off point for those standards. So this effort is, um, already underway. Programs 1F and 1J are essentially the rezoning or the upzoning to ensure feasible housing projects. Uh, so we'll be looking to rezone, uh, based on feasible standards, uh, for housing projects that will be increasing a minimum FAR in height in all of our commercial zones. And we'll be eliminating tiers in the majority of the city except for in the downtown area, uh, downtown community plan. Um, and the next slides I'll go into what those minimum FARs and heights will be. Um, but additionally, we are looking at removing any constraints that we are aware of that have been an impediment to housing. Those such things as ground floor restrictions, uh, where right now we're, uh, how residential is not permitted, uh, unit mix and something like ground floor height. Um, there's far more than those, but that is just an example of some of those constraints that we have been studying. So these next slides are just a little overview of the minimum FAR in heights that are locked into the, these programs. Uh, so this is a map showing, uh, the citywide excluding the DCP and Bergamot Area Plan. And then you can see the majority of the upzoning is in the central area of the city along our major boulevards. But there has been also upzoning on Montana Avenue, Main Street, along Lincoln, uh, and even along Pico, even though Pico is the one that has received the least amount of upzoning uh, in comparison to our other areas. And ultimately, this is so we have the capacity, overall capacity of around 13,600 units uh, to ensure that we have a healthy buffer between what our arena is and what we can accommodate. So in case a project does not build to the density that we expected, uh, there is still, you know, that buffer for us to not fall out of compliance. So that is why you're seeing kind of the mass rezoning of the city, not just specific sites. Uh, this next map is the Bergamot Area Plan. Uh, this is also receiving, um, a significant increase in FAR in heights. Uh, however, uh, per the Planning Commission's recommendation, I believe, last time we saw you about this issue, uh, some of the zone districts, um, have been kind of split, specifically the MUC zone, where you can see the 3.25s with 70 feet are kind of a way to taper off as the zones kind of start touching more of our residential neighborhoods. And finally, this is the downtown plan. Um, all of the tier one, this is where tiers will still be in effect. Um, all of the DCP tier ones will have a base of 2.75 and 60 feet. Um, and then tier twos and tier threes are increases above that. Uh, we did also include N, uh, Neighborhood Village or NV Zone, uh, into the tier three category as it wasn't originally, um, tier three was not originally available to that zone district. The next program is Program 1G, which is the incentivizing development of ADUs. Uh, this is really for us to help streamline and facilitate the development. And what this is, um, pertaining to is creating a ADU user-friendly handbook to help demystify and bring greater transparency to the ADU process for the average homeowner. Because it is our goal in the housing element to produce, to issue at least 40, on average, 47 ADU building permits per year. So we wanted to, you know, make sure the standards are as clear as possible and to make sure, you know, homeowners are aware of the, um, the process they are about to endeavor into. Uh, we will also be updating our ADU ordinance inconsistency with state law as there has been some recent changes that we will need to implement. And this is also connected to an existing grant that we've also been working on for the last year. And we're hoping that the handbook should be finalized hopefully by the end of this year. So this is another work product that is well underway. Program 1H is the adaptive reuse of existing commercial buildings for housing. And the objective is to essentially provide increased flexibility for the reuse of the to essentially provide increased flexibility for the reuse of these sites. This is a future work product that will involve us amending the zoning ordinance to incentivize this conversion and may involve any zone changes in relation to minimum parking requirements, unit mix, open space, and looking at the technical building code adjustments that might be needed to facilitate this type of conversion. Next is Program 1I, which is the Innovation in Construction Technologies. So it's again to remove those impediments to innovation and construction. So as construction technologies advance and such types of constructions, such as mass timber, might produce lower cost of construction, we're looking at ways that we could help streamline those construction methods to be more flexible in in development of housing. The next is Program 1K, which is our Adequate Sites Program. This is to make sure that we create an opportunity to accommodate our lower income arena. And we're doing this by essentially making sure that at any given time, we have enough adequate sites available to be meeting our low income housing requirement. A large way we are accomplishing our lower income is through our city-owned sites, which we are planning on to, which we are planning to have them accommodate 1,880 lower income units. So we will be allowing 100% affordable, 100% residential in those uses, requiring at least 50% of the floor area to be residential uses. We also are complying with the no let loss. And again, that's to making sure that in any given time, we might be having to adjust the sites we have on our arena to ensure that we are continuing to meet our objective. And it is largely why we have the buffer we have established above our arena. And lastly, for this section is updating our state density bonus ordinance to ensure consistency with state law. So this is largely going to make sure that our current ordinance aligns with making sure that the percentage increase of density bonus is based on the onsite affordable units. We will be creating a by right incentive and concession menu. This doesn't mean that things not on this menu cannot be applied for. They certainly can. However, we've determined that there are a handful of things on this by right menu that would avoid having to go through the required, let's call it paperwork, that another request would maybe have to go through. And note, just for consistency with new updates, we will be also demystifying how we will be converting FAR to units as we don't have density in the typical fashion per units. So we will be explaining how one would convert FAR to units to achieve the state density bonus. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kerry to talk about the Affordable Housing Production Programs.
Thanks, Ross. So this section, as Ross said, I'll be reviewing the next grouping of programs that address affordable housing production. Okay, so the first program is Program 2A, which is the creation of the Moderate Income Affordable Housing Overlay. So this program provides 100% moderate income projects in select areas. A handful of incentives that are largely already provided under SB 1763. Some of these include, you know, additional 33 feet or three stories for these projects, a density bonus of 50%. Provision of four incentives or concessions and no minimum parking requirement. So the area proposed under this program will target the Bergamot Area, the downtown, and also a half mile radius around the 17th Expo Station. So as I said, this program is really essentially an expansion of the provisions under SB 1763 and provides them to 100% moderate affordable housing projects, which currently are not included in that state bill. Next slide, please. So Program 2B, this provides nonprofit affordable housing developers a right of first refusal for land in the city with the objective of making them more competitive in the market. So this is really modeled after San Francisco's COPA ordinance and allows nonprofit developers to receive advance notice and submit the first offer when land goes on. Next slide, please. So next is 2C, which is an overhaul of the city's Affordable Housing Production Program, the HPT. So this is to really ensure that developers have a viable option for complying with the affordable requirements. So this program, it changes the affordability requirement for multi-unit housing projects to 15% with an even split across the low to moderate income categories. This is really to achieve the quantified objective for lower income households set in the arena. So some other program amendments that are folded into this is an increase of the threshold for the onsite obligation from four to six units. An elimination of the menu of affordability compliance options, which is replaced with the above mentioned 15%. An increase of the offsite option to be greater than the onsite option. And an elimination of that quarter mile radius requirement for those offsite projects. This program will also reevaluate the in-loo fee for affordability and provide a study for a mixed compliance of on and offsite option and also providing offsite options through acquisition rehab. Next slide, please. So Programs 2E and 2F, these commit city-owned sites for the development of affordable housing. And it's also a continuation of provision of technical and financial assistance for affordable housing. So the city-owned sites are largely making up for the lower income arena requirement and are currently programmed to accommodate approximately 1,880 affordable units across these five sites listed in this table. Currently, the RFP is already released for PS3 in the downtown. And the RFP that will be next is for the Wilshire Lots, which is slated for 2023. Next slide. And a little more on the city-owned sites. So the city must select candidate sites to accommodate the lower income shortfall. These sites must be rezoned to address a shortfall in the lower income unit category. And to do this, it's essentially a calculation of the net difference between current zoning capacity and the lower income requirement. This comes out to approximately 1,100 units. We've shown that the city-owned sites have the capacity to accommodate that shortfall by providing about 1,880. And per state law, these sites must allow 100% residential use and that must occupy at least 50% of the floor area. And I want to note that losing one of these sites will mean that there's a shortfall in meeting the lower income unit. So there will be, there will need to be an adjustment to identify alternative sites to make up for that loss. And next slide. So Programs 2G, 2I, 5A, and 5B all address different housing for special needs and homelessness. So these programs, you know, really address housing for seniors or persons with disabilities. They're set to consider new housing types to serve these persons with disabilities. Also to support permanent supportive housing, which is already permitted in all zones. It's also to add low barrier navigation centers as a by right use in the land use table missions. And also to review, continue to review any special needs housing requirements. Slide. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Rachel for the third section to go over the AFFH.
Okay, um, next slide. So as you all know, an important component of this cycle's housing element was the mandate to affirmally further fair housing, ensuring that we have sufficient programs in our housing element to ensure that we're providing equitable and fair housing opportunities throughout the city. Kerry has already gone through some programs that, you know, have the dual strategy of providing affordable housing. But those programs, which are 2F, 2G, 2I, also have an important role in affirmably furthering fair housing. In addition, we have Goal 3 programs, Goal 6 programs, and Goal 7 programs, which all address, you know, Santa Monica's current actions on fair housing. The city has always been a leader in providing fair housing and ensuring fair housing enforcement. For example, we have a city attorney's office, a fair housing division, whose charge is really to address fair housing complaints and ensure that fair housing state laws are, and federal laws are here too. In addition to those programs, we also have additional AFFH programs proposed in the housing element under the Goal 4, which includes Programs 4A through 4F. And I'll go over those next, next slide. The first, as I mentioned before, housing preservation is one of the key strategies in us ensuring AFFH. As you can see here, a lot of our rent control units, and we have about 27,000 rent control units throughout the city, a large portion of these, about 90% of these, are located within our multi-unit districts. So our R2, R3, R4s and our OP districts all have a significant number of rent control units. That is a big reason why we are not choosing to upzone these areas, because they are very important in preserving our rent control units. Next slide. Program 4A looks to increase the housing opportunities throughout the city. That means providing housing as a permitted use in areas where it's been currently, where it is currently prohibited, such as the office campus and industrial conservation. And this is aligned with kind of what the state is looking to do, you know, opening up commercial areas for residential. And so we would be allowing housing as a permitted use in these areas. In addition, we would be upzoning and providing increased FARs for housing projects in areas that have historically not accommodated housing in the past, such as on Main Street, Montana, and the Ocean Park areas. These areas, while we do allow housing, have a very low FAR, so we would be upzoning to ensure the housing projects are in fact feasible. Next slide. Program 1C addresses housing on surface parking lots in residential zones. So these are surface parking lots that may or may not be A lots. I don't know if some of you are aware, but there are some A lots throughout the residential area, but there are a fair number of surface parking lots that don't have that A lot designation. And so our objective for this program would be to incentivize housing on these surface parking lots. And this would ensure that we wouldn't be displacing existing tenants while also encouraging housing to develop on these underutilized lots. And for this program, we would be restoring the underlying maximal allowable density, which means removing the unit caps that's currently in the zoning ordinance for these sites, as well as allowing flexibility on where the commercial parking would be placed, removing lot consolidation restrictions, and providing flexibility in the street access of these sites. Some of these sites are located in the R1 zones, so keep that in mind. But this is a very important strategy to ensure that we will be increasing housing opportunities in high opportunity areas and high resources areas without displacing existing residents. Next slide. The next program is Program 4B, which is also incentivizing housing on community assembly surface parking lots. During the preparation of the housing element, we met with a number of nonprofit community assembly religious religious institutions that had expressed interest in developing, you know, affordable housing on their surface parking lots. And this program would do that by giving them increased height of 33 feet as well as unlimited density. And the stipulations for this would be that, you know, no more than 50% of their project would be market rate housing and development on these sites will also not have any minimum parking requirements. Next slide. Program 4C relates to the ADU program a little bit with that Ross had discussed earlier. But for this program, we would be incentivizing additional ADUs. Currently, under our existing zoning ordinance and state law, we allow one JADU and one ADU on our one parcel. With this program, we would increase the number of ADUs allowed, so long as that extra ADU is deed restricted as a, I'm sorry, it would be deed restricted as a rental unit in perpetuity. And so this program would ensure that we would be able to achieve more fair housing opportunities, particularly within the R1 zone districts. Next slide. Program 4E is the compliance with SB 9. As you all know, SB 9 provided new regulations as to duplexes and lot splits in R1 parcels. And so following our discussions with planning commission and council, there was agreement that we would incentivize larger parcels that are at least 10,000 square feet to allow them to have an additional ADU in addition to the SB 9 units. So this would in fact potentially allow up to six units on a larger lot through a multi-step process. Next slide. And Program 4D is the Right to Return Pilot. This program has, was originally initiated in July 2021. And the intent of this program was to prioritize housing for those households that were unfortunately displaced during the 1950s and 60s due to construction of the I-10 freeway or due to the Civic Center Urban Renewal Program. This pilot program allows qualifying household to be placed on the affordable housing waitlist with a second priority. And Program 4D would continue to make this pilot program somewhat, pretty much permanent. So next slide. Program 4F is the housing production targets in the R1 zones and mid-cycle monitoring. This would ensure that our current, sorry, our ADU programs as well as our SB 9 program would provide increased housing units in the R1. So as Ross mentioned before, we were aimed to issue at least 47 building permits in the R1 zones, such that there would be increased housing opportunities in these high opportunity areas. And we would be providing mid-cycle monitoring and reviewing the progress of these targets and adjust strategies, adjust the strategies as necessary within a one-year period. Next slide. And I'm going to pass this off to Housing Stability Programs, which will be addressed by Steve.
Thanks, Rachel. So as the commission recalls, the housing element includes a variety of housing stability programs that include preservation programs that focus on rehabilitation to maintain and the use and livability of our aging residential buildings. And also housing assistance programs and services that focus on providing financial and technical support for our seniors, our families, persons with disabilities, and others with special needs. And this is in efforts to help our residents retain their housing in the city. Next slide. So we've talked about housing barriers and the needs for existing residents as highlighted through our technical working groups, which include the need for rental assistance and support for those who are a bit burdened, the continued tenant protection and assistance ranging from either legal counsel, oversight of landlord obligations related to voucher programs and housing maintenance and repairs, and also assistance on tenant rights and available housing programs. The continued support services for the homeless and also the at-risk individuals. And the need to preserve housing affordability by maintaining and rehabbing our existing housing stock. So I'll be going over a handful of the programs in the housing element that will help the city achieve its housing stability goals. Next slide. Protecting our existing rental units. Goal number three of the elements seeks to preserve the existing housing supply and also prevent the displacement of existing residents. Program 3A, for example, restricts the removal of existing rental units and also ensures that protected units, such as rent-controlled units, are replaced as part of any new project, ensuring compliance with SB 330. The city will continue to restrict condo conversions in efforts to preserve our existing rental units. And Program 3C seeks to preserve both restricted and non-restricted at-risk housing units, in which the program would also explore strategies to conserve rent-controlled and also naturally occurring affordable units that are also at risk of removal for redevelopment. Next slide. Tenant and landlord support and outreach. So Programs 3B and 3H would provide additional education and outreach to tenants and landlords on the legal requirements of Section 8 and other similar state and federal housing voucher programs. This program would also provide outreach to landlords on available city programs in efforts to encourage the continued rehab and repairs and also upgrades to our aging buildings. Uh, the city's low-income residential repair program will be maintained. And also, uh, program three I, uh, will continue the right to, uh, council pilot program, uh, that provides legal assistance for low, uh, income residents facing eviction. Uh, next slide. Uh, as Carrie had mentioned earlier, the, uh, city will continue to invest in housing and supportive services to prevent and address, uh, the impacts of homelessness, uh, as provided in program five A. And also, uh, program five B, uh, requires, uh, by right, low barrier navigation centers, uh, in non-residential zones, which are essentially service-enriched, uh, homeless shelters that also provide, uh, temporary living facilities as well as case management. Uh, next slide. Housing assistance and supportive programs to, uh, low-income households and also households with special needs, families, seniors and the homeless. Uh, the housing element includes a variety of programs, uh, including, uh, maintaining our rental, uh, housing voucher programs and seeking funding sources, uh, to support rental assistance for vulnerable individuals as well as households, uh, at risk of displacement. Uh, and this is consistent with the city practice of always monitoring the available and availability of, uh, funding sources on, on, on an ongoing basis. Uh, maintaining and potentially, uh, potentially expanding our POD program, uh, by pursuing additional funding to further expand assistance to other rent burdened residents. Uh, the element includes a program that addresses resident concerns where the city would provide additional outreach and coordination. This is to raise, uh, tenant and landlord awareness of available housing programs as well as resources. Uh, and the city will continue to provide, uh, fair housing enforcement and outreach, uh, through the city attorney's office. And finally, the, uh, we would continue to provide tenant and landlord, uh, mediation and legal services. Um, and that, uh, concludes, uh, staff's refresher of the city's six-cycle housing element. And we are available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. We have a few questions. Before we start questions, let's open the caller queue and make sure that we have, we have the call, the number up for the callers. Um, with that, I saw Commissioner Fonda Bernardi and then Lambert.
So, uh, first question is, I guess it's a possibly a question for Jing. If we're gonna provide this new housing element on the fourteenth, there, the eleventh, and they have three, four days to turn it around, is that feasible? Is that a realistic, uh, response, uh, event for the state? Are they gonna meet that or are they gonna stick us on the back burner? And, and then we're really cooked.
Um, you know, that's, that's certainly, we, we, we have alerted, um, HCD staff who have been reading this that of our intentions and the timeline that we're trying to follow. Um, obviously, it's not our decision or, you know, even our, our review. We, we can only do everything that we can to try and meet that deadline. Um, and, you know, it's certainly a short turnaround, but, you know, we are doing everything we can to let them know that, you know, we are trying to make this deadline. Um, and, you know, that's really what, that's pretty much all we can do, you know, to, to, uh, you know, request the assistance to try and make it back to October fifteenth.
Have we any sense for how many other cities are gonna be jamming into that three or four-day interval? How many cities have already been through the maze and now get aside?
Um, there have been actually, um, since, since the February, or since the February letters. Um, I wanna say there have, there, there have been cities, like, they've been steadily certifying cities in SCAG. Um, actually, um, city, city of Los Angeles, um, you know, being one of them, Long Beach. Um, there are others on that list that have made it through. Um, you know, all we can share is in discussions with the HCD staff is, you know, they, they are obviously aware of the deadline and, you know, how meaningful, um, that is. Um, and, you know, that they are looking at, you know, consideration for, uh, prioritizing cities, you know, who are trying to, you know, go through the right steps and, and do the right thing in terms of, uh, being compliant by October fifteenth.
And I guess through, when I was asking about other cities, when we look at when they submitted and when they got a response, is that information publicly available and can we see what the turnaround time is?
Uh, yeah, I mean, all the housing, uh, eat, some cities posted on their website, but certainly it's available on the HCD website as to, you know, all the, all the letters are, are public record. Um, you know, we've been pretty busy just working on our own stuff, so we've not had a lot of chance to, to track everybody else. Um, you know, I, I mean, I, I guess I could observe just off, off my head in terms of city of Los Angeles. It, it was a pretty, you know, pretty decent, um, turnaround, given the scale of it. Um, they also were not, you know, there, there was a little bit of a, a lull, obviously, in terms of the housing element submittals at the time. So maybe that was helpful as well. Um, you know, but they are aware, you know, that, that we are, are going down this path. And I'm, I, I don't have a sense as to how many other cities are, you know, trying to do what we're doing.
Um, Jing, can I just jump in here too? If, um, Commissioner, uh, Fonda Bernardi, if you are interested, HCD has a, actually a very helpful, um, housing element website that shows the status of, of all the cities in the jurisdictions, um, housing element and where they stand. And includes the timeline of when they submitted, when they're due in terms of comments. So if you look on HCD's website, um, they actually have that information.
Yeah, we will, we will send out that link to the planning commission, just so you, you have it for your information.
That would be great. Um, SB thirty-five, uh, is this half-mile radius thing. And, uh, I, I guess if we don't meet our arena numbers, which is almost a guarantee, it kicks in. Tell us a little bit about that. What's the, what's the, the impact of SB thirty-five?
So, um, SB thirty-five actually isn't about the half-mile radius so much as it's, it basically provides a streamlined process, um, for, uh, housing, uh, providers to pursue, um, if they would like to do so. And, you know, it's based on, like I said, the city's actual performance in terms of issuing building permits. So, um, as we indicated, uh, in the presentation, and it is in slide six, um, of the PowerPoint. This, that's kind of a high-level summary. So, um, basically it matters if you don't meet your above-moderate arena, so the market rate, um, production, and then the lower-income production. Those are the two sort of metrics that SB thirty-five depends on. Um, and if the city doesn't meet, you know, either one of those, there is a streamlined process available for housing projects that provide, you know, either ten percent or fifty percent affordability. Um, there's a very long list of preconditions that a developer has to agree to, um, in order to use, uh, the SB thirty-five process. Um, I, I think just sort of, I can just share like anecdotally, um, one of those being prevailing wage. We have heard, you know, from, from the development community that that's sort of, um, a big barrier for them in terms of using SB thirty-five because it adds some pretty substantial cost to a project. Um, you know, Santa Monica has not been subject to SB thirty-five, um, since it was enacted, you know, based on our performance in the fifth cycle. Um, you know, but I think you're, you're sort of rightly stating, you know, going forward, our, our arena targets are, are so high. You know, we can probably expect that, you know, we will be subject to SB thirty-five and people will be able to opt into, um, you know, that program should they wish to.
Yeah, I, I see. I, I misspoke. What I was interested is this new state law affecting, uh, parking within a half a mile. Is that a half mile to light rail stations or half a mile to, um, any bus stop at a certain frequency?
Yeah, that's the, um, I think it's AB twenty-four, is it?
AB twenty-nine-seven, and it's actually has been passed by the state legislature, but has not been signed by Governor Newsom. Um, the indication is that he will sign it, um, but the definition is half a mile of a major transit stop.
So what I'm saying, are we saying in effect, it's the whole city except for a little five percent of the city along San Jacinto Boulevard? And what we're really saying is that, that bill says there are no mandatory parking. There's no parking requirement in the whole city. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Half mile from a major transit stop is not our entire city. I think you're thinking about, um, what are called like HQTAs, you know, which are from like corridors as well. That covers a larger swath of the city. Major transit stops will, will cover probably like two-thirds of the city. It, it doesn't reach into, if I'm like, remember like Noma, like sort of, you know, north of Montana and a little bit of Sunset Park, if I'm remembering, yeah.
What, what I'm saying is that we, if you, if you scrub off, let's say, the R one sites that are half a mile away from these, these corridors, uh, you basically say in our city where the development is gonna happen, because those R one sites are pretty built out, that there is no parking requirement. So we're gonna go into basically a free-for-all where everyone's fighting for the public street parking. And that's not gonna be a good thing for our city. So, um, I guess it's, we're gonna wait and see, but I, it feels like that's a deal killer right there on this. Uh, so what's happening is we keep trying to meet the bar of, of the, um, the housing element and then they keep taking away any of the things. And so the bar just sort of, virtually they've dismantled the entire zoning code. So we shouldn't even have a discussion about, well, reducing minimum parking requirements because that one has just swept away all the parking requirements. There's, it's a, it takes away the whole thing, you know, it's a nuclear option for parking.
Well, like, like we indicated, there are, um, some, some bills that have passed the legislature that are, uh, you know, pending, um, signature by the governor. And, you know, obviously, we, we're monitoring that and seeing, you know, what actually, you know, finally gets signed. And, um, you know, these, these bills are often quite complex. And, you know, I think you're generally speaking about parking, you know, but we wanna, we, we've not had a chance to really read through them in detail. You know, I understand sort of, you know, beyond the sort of like high level, you know, what you read in the media and what have you, you know, and what the bill, the language of the bill actually says. Um, and we will certainly, you know, as part of our zoning red lines discussion through the fall, we will be bringing information back to the planning commission about, you know, the, the effects of these new state laws and our implementation.
Okay, now there's this EIR addendum. Do you know when that's, we'll be able to see that?
Uh, I'll let Rachel speak to that.
Uh, yes, we still have a little bit more modeling to do. And so our intent is to, um, publish before the end of the month. So that is our timeline.
Great. Uh, and then it'll be public. Uh, and then will we review it as a commission or is it just out there and it hits inside her space?
Uh, no, it's not, it's not required for the planning commission to, to vote on it or review it since it's an addendum to the EIR that was already certified. Um, it will be published with the city council agenda for the October eleventh meeting, um, for the city council's review and for public assumption as well.
Okay, um, I have two more questions. Uh, one regarding quantified objective, can you re-explain what that means and why it's even a discussion point?
So the quantified objective is basically, um, a requirement in housing element law, um, where the city is, you know, we, we go through the process of identifying, um, you know, basically it acknowledges that there are, um, you know, other constraints, you know, that may prevent the city from, from reaching its, its arena essentially. And so, um, you know, it's a, it's a exercise, you know, that we have to go through as part of the housing element, um, to, you know, come up with sort of, uh, you know, targets, uh, that, that are, in most cases, you know, less than the arena, um, taking into account, you know, other, other constraints, um, you know, that would prevent, um, the achievement of the full arena.
Now, is that absorbed in our buffer numbers or is there, is this a whole other, uh, let's say a whole other playing field that we don't, we don't really know and we don't know how to maneuver it?
No, 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 it's not, it's not something separate. It's, it's basically taking a look at arena allocation and then, um, you know, determining, you know, sort of, uh, again, acknowledging that, you know, there, there's the possibility that, you know, the city's not gonna achieve the whole arena. You know, what is, you know, some, some lesser number, basically. But it, but, but it really has no, um, meaningful, you know, impact in terms of how HCD views the city's compliance or what have you. Um, it's just, it's a requirement in housing element law. You know, like I said, it's, it's an exercise that we're, we're required to, to go through.
But it has, you said it has no meaningful impact, so what's it, what's its real purpose? What's the?
It's, again, yeah, it's a, it's a provision in, in state housing element law that, you know, and it's, it's on page, uh, one sixty-seven, um, of the housing element. And again, it's in the, it's, it's, it's a provision in state law that just states that it's recognized that the total housing needs, you know, that are allocated may exceed available resources and the community's ability to satisfy the need. So it's, it's an exercise we have to go through, you know, that, that, you know, what is, what is a potential, like, you know, more realistic objective, I guess, is, is one way to think about it. Um, and it's not, doesn't have to be identical to the housing needs, but the quantified objective is not used as a metric in terms of determining the city's compliance, um, you know, for, uh, go, go, going forward in the housing element cycle.
Okay, last question. I'm very concerned about, uh, Fourth and Arizona, uh, turning into a giant, um, housing project when I feel it should be a park along with the number of other people. And so the question is, where would be, uh, alternative sites to displace, um, where all of those three hundred sixteen units that are assigned there? And could they be added to the units that are assigned, the other city projects?
So that's gonna be part of the implementation discussion. Um, the, you know, the, uh, program two E, I guess it's two E, um, that talks about the city-owned sites. You know, there's a minimum of eighteen hundred and eighty units that the city has committed to, um, in the housing element. And I think the question you're asking is really sort of a next level of detail. Um, we have included the table in the housing element that lists, you know, the capacity for these city-owned sites. But, you know, in order to be in compliance, the city is not in a position to reduce that eighteen hundred and eighty units that we've committed to.
I'm not saying reduce it, I'm saying redistribute it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think that's something that, you know, a, again, would be part of the implementation of the program.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Lambert, I think you were next. Can somebody mute her? Yeah, can you unmute her? There you go.
Are you also, I've lost the screen, but can you hear me?
We can see you and we can hear you.
That's interesting. I can't see any of you. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, one is Jing, you talked about sort of the bucket list and what we're gonna be doing over the next few months. And for example, the development standards in October, the red lines. Does that mean it's gonna be like a final action in October or how's that, how's that gonna work?
No, uh, what we anticipate is a, is a process, um, probably, if you recall, very similar to the downtown community plan. You're gonna get a master staff report, um, with all of the red lines and that's going to carry us through over the number of months. So I would anticipate these being discussions, because there's a lot to cover, you know, more than we can certainly do in just one night. And we thought it would be more feasible and quite frankly, you know, just more sane for everybody to try and break this up, you know, into, um, related topic areas. So the commission has plenty of time to absorb, um, and, and discuss these zoning red lines. Um, you know, I think we can talk about the process more with the chair and vice chair, um, you know, at our next meetings. But, you know, I think what was helpful before was sort of going through this process, taking, you know, a sense of the commission through straw polls. And then, you know, staff will be noting that down and sort of, um, you know, making changes to bring back as sort of like, you know, a, a, a meeting, you know, where you actually take a formal vote. But we're not anticipating like, you know, voting on that. It's really just, it's, it's a means to introduce the subject, you know, have discussion, take straw polls if we can, and then sort of continue those topical discussions, you know, and so sort of aiming towards an adoption meeting. But it's gonna be over a course of few months.
But here's, here's, that's one of the reasons I asked that. And, and first let me say, the only changes you've made in the document adopted by us and by the city council is the timelines for action, correct?
That is correct.
Um, so you would discourage us from screwing around with the text or in programs and other things because that will have a ripple effect on the whole housing element. Is that correct?
I would strongly recommend not doing that because that would only serve to delay HCD's review.
Yes, and we do not wanna do that.
Right.
Um, okay, here's, here's my issue. Um, when the housing element was adopted by the planning commission and the city council, there were times, there were schedules for actions in the housing element and, and rezoning being a major one. And they are no longer there. And they are no longer there. And what is there instead is not less than one year, not more than three years from October of 2021, which essentially gives us until October 2024 to do the rezoning necessary to meet our Rena. And that's, I mean, I know you're going to work hard to make that irrelevant, but that's the way it reads. And my concern is that that provides absolutely zero certainty to housing developers. They're not going to know when the red lines are coming, when they're, or when the changes are coming. And and they're really up a creek and not knowing that because, as you know, putting a housing project together involves bringing investors in and, you know, the whole crew. And if they don't know when that rezoning is going to happen, they are going to be very reluctant to do that. So would you be okay with, instead of three years, putting two years?
I mean, I think, you know, certainly the commission can make whatever recommendation it wishes to the city council. I think the reason we put this, you know, sort of the the full extent in here, it's it's just a statement of what's allowed under state law. I think, you know, you can see the work that staff has put in where, you know, we've certainly not been dawdling on on the process by any means.
I wasn't implying that.
No, 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 I mean, but but, you know, I I think we're also trying to be mindful of, you know, it is, these are, these are some, you know, it's wholesale changes, right, to the to the zoning ordinance in many ways. And sort of providing sufficient time, you know, for the community process to unfold regarding those changes, you know, which must be in compliance with the housing element, but also not put the CD in a position of putting like an artificially early date, you know, and then when we go to report, we missed it, but it was like a self created problem because even though we had more time. So I think that's that's sort of what we were weighing in terms of putting in the timelines.
Jing, that's what the city council and the planning commission adopted, actual time schedule with with date certainties for doing things.
Yes, and then, right, and no, actually, in June, everything got changed to October 15, 2022 by necessity, because that is what the law said at the time.
Right, I understand.
And, you know, that that changed after we, so all of the the dates that we had had, you know, in like October 2021, all changed in June. You know, to meet that new zoning deadline. And then now, you know, because of the, if we make that deadline by October 15, you know, there is additional time to do it. But 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 again, you know, if I I would have, you know, no objection, certainly if the commission wanted to put earlier dates or or what have you on there, or if you wanted to recommend, you know, specific dates to the city council. You know, we certainly would be open to that, but just explaining some of our thinking in terms of, you know, again, stating what's allowed under state law.
I I really don't want to get into the minutia of those dates that were in the housing element. So I think it would just be easier depending on what other commissioners feel and and your input is welcome. As saying two years from October 2021. So I really think we need to give the development community some certainty so we can see some protection happening, and they don't have it with three years. So that's my thought, and I would like to hear from other commissioners. I just, I don't think it would, it would penalize us by putting October 2023. And I mean, we're going to be out of compliance with Rena anyway. So being out of compliance with the schedules, you know, is one more thing. So anyway, I just, I'd like to hear what other commissioners think about that. And thank you.
So if I could just make one clarification with respect to the consequences for being out of compliance with Rena, that's generally an SB 35 consequence.
I know, I know.
And and if you are in not in compliance with your deadlines, there are other consequences such as the AG's office, if they get referred to by HCD, could require the city to start compelling the city to come into compliance with it, right? So it's a little different. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Oh, thank you. I was just thinking, I mean, the schedule that we put, we all adopted in the housing element was much more aggressive than October 2023. So it seems like we should be able to do it by October 2023, since we were saying we could do it before. I don't know why we can't do it now. But again, I want to hear other people talk about it.
Okay, questions or comments? Commissioner Raskin?
I'll just say for the sake of discussion, I tend to agree with Commissioner Lambert that we should aim for the more aggressive schedule if we can.
Thank you. I can't turn my mute off.
Do that for you.
All right, Commissioner Fontan Bernardi?
And I also agree with Commissioner Lambert. And of all the shopping lists that we have, and I know the ones that you've showed us goes out to the end of the year, basically, and beyond. It would be maybe, and I don't know if they can be chopped up this way, but these are the ones that have the greatest impact on the the development of new housing first and new the ones that have more preservation, dating, existing residents and all that, things that are essential, but not super time critical because they're not involved in creating new houses, but more keeping people in housing. And and so, you know, those, I don't know if you can triage them that way, you know, essentially things that affect new construction go ahead of the line, things that preserve existing building. They'll still be there to be preserved if there's there's a month or five delay in in the execution. I don't know, Jing, if you can make that that triage, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually organize it that way. That's why we're starting with development standards. You know, the the foundational aspects of the AHPP and density bonus, and they all kind of go together. Those are, you know, obviously, the the high level, you know, we call like the rezone standards. Those are the ones that are sort of the biggest moves. And then into those those programs that are, you know, sort of new housing opportunities in terms of the definitions of a housing project, you know, new requirements for that. So we did organize it in that way to jump straight into the most impactful standards.
Any other commission comments or responses to Commissioner Lambert? Okay, I'll just, I'll just chime in that, I mean, I think we got to be very careful, obviously, with what Jing said with making any tweaks at this point. I don't hear anybody making any significant ones. I do think there is some value in trying to push the schedule a little bit without, I'm I'm supportive of that, but I want to also keep our staff sane and alive, though I don't want them to be overworked either. Is there any, anybody have any other comments or questions? Maybe we can open the public comment at this point? Yeah, let's turn to public comment. Do we have any existing callers or we need to give them a timer?
No, we do not. I'm giving it one minute. We did not receive any calls in that time.
Okay. Well, commissioners, let me jump back to my agenda here, but we don't have any other comment. We've got our discussion. I think we're done with this tonight. And we're going to come back tomorrow and and finish. Commissioner Fontan Bernardi?
Well, I would like to thank the staff for the review. First of all, it was nice to see how much work we've done and they've done, you know, three months ago. We tend to forget, but then when you see it all laid out like this, it's an awesome effort. And it was really great to get that kind of, basically, refresher course and understand where we are. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and we appreciate the years of work that the commission has put into this as well.
Well, we are in it together. Okay, okay, let's, we're going to move on to the next item, number 10. And we, this is public input on items that are not on our agenda. If we can go ahead and get a timer going and the phone number.
We still have not received any calls.
Okay, great. Okay, well, with that, commissioners, I am going to adjourn the meeting at 7:51, and we'll see you all back here tomorrow night. Have a good rest of your evening. Thanks again, staff. We appreciate your work.